That's it, let's go. Call the meeting to order. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the latest installment of the Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded via audio and visual means. And any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I have none. I would, on the other hand, like to recognize and commend all those on our county staff and all the citizens of Umatilla County for their response to the flood that we had. It truly points out the nature of eastern Oregon people and why it's such a pleasure to live here.
Couldn't agree more.
I also think it's important to note the demonstration of support we saw last night. They didn't put that benefit spaghetti feed together with very much notice.
No.
And the convention center was absolutely packed, and that was pretty impressive.
And that band was amazing. They had a live band and everything for us. That was great. I loved it. No, it was very well attended.
That was real country music.
Was it Grateful Dead?
No. Acknowledgements of the minutes of previous meeting, February 5th of 2020.
Mr. Chair, I move second in acknowledgement.
Move to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any additions to the agenda?
There is one that's been added. It's not on your written agenda, but it is on the monitor. It's the letter of opposition, number nine.
Got it.
Did you get my input?
Okay. So at this time, if there's anybody who wants to address the board, now would be the time, if it's not in something that's already on the agenda, for public input. Okay. Item number one, livestock road legalization. Mr. Kenny.
Good morning. Matt Kenny, Umatilla County Public Works Survey Supervisor. So, the Public Works Department has for some time been looking to legalize a portion of Northwest Livestock Road. This particular area is located just south of the Hermison Generating Plant and just northwest of the Livestock Commission Stockyard there. It's located between the easterly right-of-way of Westland Road and the east line of Section 25. It's about 600 feet in length. A little background, the current intersection of Westland Road and Livestock Road is actually a portion of an old ODOT frontage road. It's right there, probably 100 feet just north of the Westland Road off-ramp. Currently, there's ODOT spacing requirements in place for intersections near interstates. That intersection does not currently meet that standard. The proposal is to move the road back to its original location, which is 1,000 feet or more north of that location at the northerly Livestock Road entrance, just north of the Modellas complex there. In the map there, it's shown in red, that's the portion that's proposed to be legalized. What you see in blue is the existing right-of-way that was dedicated back in 1908. So, a little bit on the history of how the road got the way it was, or the way it is. Original Road 651, as I said, was established in 1908, and it was described as following the north-south section lines, more specifically, the east line of Section 25. The current physical location of the road redirects westerly from the section line to its intersection with Westland Road to avoid crossing the Westland Canal. Records indicate that the petition for Old Road 651 was filed the same day as the Westland Canal right-of-way was deeded. It is highly likely that the road never followed the section line as described, but rather deviated westerly around the canal to avoid the construction of two additional bridges. The historical imagery from 1952 further supports this theory, as the road follows the same route as being proposed for legalization. So if we scroll down to the next page, there's a 1952 aerial photo that kind of shows the section line locations there outlined in yellow. Livestock Road is seen there in red, and it kind of, you can see it jogging northwesterly and then northeasterly around the canal. No evidence of the road running north-south along the section line as described in the notes can be seen. And on the next page, in the 1970 aerial photo, it's virtually the same scenario. So the road's been where it is now for quite some time. Little background on the frontage road down there near the interstate. So in 1965, ODOT did relinquish a portion of ID4 frontage right-of-way to the county. Shortly after that was about the time that that was constructed and recognized as the Northwest Livestock Road interchange. And since then, the portion that we're proposing to legalize has been there, but it hasn't really been used that much. It's still there, you can see the gravel road surface. It is used, but rarely. So, on the survey end of things, back in 1999, William Wells did a survey for adjoining property ownerships for the Modellas properties there on the west. In that survey, he held the road's physical location for alignment and monumented the right-of-way to width of 40 feet. That was per discussion with the Umatilla County Road Department at that time. He even noted that in his survey. He then subsequently filed a partition plat in 2000 where he dedicated an additional amount of right-of-way. That was near the intersection with Westland Road to allow for all the large trucks and things that they come in and out of there with. And so there you can see Partition Plat 2047. That's virtually exactly what we're proposing to legalize there. We're also recommending that that little piece of public right-of-way dedicated on the plat be recognized as a portion of County Road 1328 Livestock Road. So that's all. The goal is to have that all one whole contiguous piece of right-of-way. So with that, it is the recommendation of the Public Works Department that this portion of Northwest Livestock Road be legalized, as shown in Record of Survey 99-255C and Partition Plat 2047, and that any existing public right-of-way dedicated and accepted in said plat be placed on the county road system. It is also recommended that that portion of Old Road 651 lying between the southerly right-of-way margin of Westland Road and the northerly right-of-way margin of the proposed legalization be documented as void in the order. Overall, the proposed legalization will improve safety and provide the infrastructure for future development and transportation needs. Returning the road to its former location will also satisfy current ODOT setback requirements for access points from an interstate overpass, improving the overall safety and function of the interchange.
So which part are we avoiding?
So there's the old road that runs northerly.
Frontage road?
Is that this portion here?
The portion northerly from what we're proposing to legalize to Westland Road, yeah.
Oh, I see.
It's always a good.
This will stay?
The right-of-way will stay, but the road will be realigned at some point. So the idea is that all traffic flow will follow the original route, and this portion's going to be legalized. So that... And one thing I didn't mention is that there are some future development plans in place that could provide for a four-way intersection at that location at some point in time. So it's, it would be a good thing.
So do we need to set a hearing for this?
No, this isn't a hearing.
This is the, okay. So now we just adopt the order?
I need to have a public portion of the hearing. We've got a staff report now opening the hearing to the public.
Matt, so the little road that goes into the sale yard goes away?
The, from Westland into the sale yard?
Yeah.
Yeah, eventually.
Because I don't know much about ODOT regulations, but it would appear to me that turns rather quickly after you come off the freeway.
It does.
I don't think they like that very much.
Right, yeah, and I think that's kind of the goal, is to satisfy ODOT by getting rid of that intersection, pushing it northerly where our right-of-way exists, and kind of make ODOT happy, make us happy, and...
So it's almost immediate.
I'm sorry?
It's almost immediate.
So going back to that first picture? That had the red and blue?
Yeah.
Right there. Take it up there a little, a little further, a little higher. I want to see the bottom part of it.
The other way.
Okay, from the blue line out to Westland Road, is that part of Frontage Road?
That's part of the frontage road, yes.
And is that to be voided or not?
That's not to be voided. That will just, that'll be right-of-way that still exists, but the road itself will be realigned to conform with what you see there in color.
Yes. Other words, instead of intersecting with Westland Road where it currently does, it'll follow the blue line, if I was coming westerly.
Yes.
I would follow the blue line out to the red and out to Westland Road that way, instead of directly out.
Correct.
The way it is.
Yeah, and it's just good practice to note which portions are being voided, because in the ORS, it does provide that, you know, when you legalize a road, all the old portions of the road that don't jive with what you're proposing to legalize are voided. So if you specifically say what it is that's being voided, it clears up a lot of confusion for folks later. That's why I mentioned that portion that goes north up into what is now that VA data facility would be voided, because the road jogs around the canal, so the likelihood that that would ever be developed is slim to none.
Yeah, I see.
Anything further for Mr. Kenny? Okay, let's go ahead and go into hearing mode now, this time? So, do we have public comment? So, public comment for the project is open? Any people want to speak against this road? Good morning, please. And then go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Jane Clark. I live at 1325 Northwest Horn. I'm here, excuse me, representing JTG Enterprises, who owns land which will be affected. And so I would like to have it clarified, the land to the right of the red and north of the canal, right there, will need access to that land to continue our mining operation. And then at the south part of the blue of Livestock Road, where it intersect, well, Livestock Road, right, and to the Frontage Road, where it intersects there, it will, will we come off the freeway and have that hard right, and then access Frontage Road where the rest of the property is south of the canal? Because I want to make sure we establish that we want to be protected under Goal 5.
I'm sorry, say what?
We need to be protected under our Goal 5. And so if you would please speak to that before we say yes or no. If the planning commission could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
We do have our planner in the room, our planning director, but I didn't know if, would that be, Matt, do you want to answer that question instead?
Well, I don't know much about Goal 5.
No, I meant the access, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Goal 5 protects us so that our accesses to the mining operations are available, so that we're not forced to cross a bridge that is inadequate, or in any way change the operations so that it would inflict more cost to us. And so I'm looking at the road accesses, and even though, you know, how will the trucks go, are the corners, you know, that is a tough corner, and probably not the safest, but we want to make sure that we have good access and that we don't incur a lot of extra travel on a road that incurs extra expense too, for a mining operation.
So, as far as access is concerned, there's really not going to be, I know the as-traveled roadway will differ slightly, but the right-of-way that's been historically used isn't changing necessarily. I don't know, the property that is north of the canal, I don't know what your current access route is for that.
Well, we haven't mined that yet.
Okay.
And so...
It's a future.
It's a future, but I want to make sure we have access and that this does not alter that.
Yeah, so one thing I'm not sure of, because I didn't expand my search easterly, I'm not sure if that parcel has an access from a different public road, or if this is pretty much it. And also the status of the access that does go into the VA data site. I couldn't tell you whether that is public or not. I would have to do the research on that.
So where is the mining site now?
It's to the east of where we're looking. If you come south on the blue to the livestock yard, and then go a little, can you raise that higher? Is there any more?
Down the Frontage Road?
Right, and then you go to the Frontage Road, and you see in the far right corner, above the freeway there, and go to the right, down, down, to the right.
Right in that?
And above, right there. That is where the current mining is. And it will expand, and then the north, you can see the north piece is even larger. And so we don't want to build a bridge across the canal.
Can you access that?
We need truck safety. We have rights to access it there by the red area, but...
Can you access it off of Cottonwood Bend Road?
I'm not sure if we still can. There have been a couple changes with the power plant. You authorized a power station right there, yes, and getting ready for the truck stop that wants to go in, some of those things. So, and then the other concern is, what upgrades will the costs be, and would that come back to us at all?
To property owners.
Property owners, yes.
So I do know if the right-of-way that runs north-south on the west side of your parcel, the VA data parcel were to remain, that would likely not be a development project that we would have planned any time in the future. I mean, it's very unlikely that that would ever be developed after they've done what they've done to access their site. So as far as the county is, you know, the road department's concerned, I don't see that being a project that we would take on. So as far as, you know, I'm talking towards, to the bridge across the canal to reach the property, I mean, the right-of-way would be there. I just don't know. I'd really be curious to see what's going on on the other side where Cottonwood Bend is, as John said.
Is Tom here? Tom Phillips?
Yes.
Is your mining site north of the canal, or...
Both, north and south.
North and south of the canal. So your current access to that right now is...
Is right there. So as long as it has no impact on our operation, I have no problem with it, but if it has an impact, I want to know what that is.
Can I just show you what I'm looking at?
Sure.
This is from Google or Google Maps. So here's Cottonwood Bend Road. It almost looks like there's access to it from up here.
This is Tappanee's site. This half is not ours.
Okay.
So we have no legal access to that.
Okay.
And then on this side, there's no legal access across some land here that would get it to where it needs to be.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
No, that cleared it up for me, because I was looking at it.
Right, no, that part, it belongs to Tappanee.
Okay, that cleared it out.
There's two different pits there.
So I'm not sure, Doug, you can correct me on this, but if, one solution may be if we just disregard the description of the voided portion of the right-of-way?
And it'd still be there to go back?
And it'd still be retained? Would that be...
It's one way. Looking at a tax lot map, it looks like this corner right here, there is a tax lot that goes like this. And so this tax lot does touch this road portion here, so there is technically legal access to this road right-of-way.
But not over the canal.
Right, you'd have to worry about the canal.
Yeah, and, you know, part of that Goal 5 discussion was that we wouldn't impact that canal.
But you also own this property over here, though.
Yes.
And so you could, well, you'd still have...
Still, the canal runs through the whole thing.
And then do you own the next tax lot over to?
No, the next slot is Tappanee's.
Is this an emergency action that we're taking?
No.
So, it would seem to me the purpose of a hearing is to provide an opportunity to raise questions and issues, and it doesn't also, it doesn't appear to me that we're in a position to answer them adequately today.
I would agree with that.
Particularly with reference to Goal 5.
Yeah, I mean, if there's questions that need to be answered, why would we act when it's not an emergency?
The question I do have, the access into Amazon Vadera there, across that bridge, is that, that's private road to their facility, is that not correct?
They put it in, yes. But I don't know if they would allow access.
Across it?
Across that, to this piece of property or not, I don't know.
So how do you access the...
Before they put it in, there was no access anyway.
That is correct.
It's in the power station right there on that corner. It's not showing.
Jane, isn't that...
Yeah, I think it shows right there at the end of the driveway, yeah.
Jane, isn't it true, before Vadera put the bridge in and the road access to their property, there was no access across, other than what you would build?
There would be access off Westland, across that little piece. There's a deed, I believe. And from the, and from Livestock Road, I believe there's access.
Doesn't that canal, where would you access it?
On the north side. I didn't come prepared to, you know, with all my documents, I guess.
If this is private road there...
Yeah, but there's... But there's, I think there's a legal access, there's a legal access across that strip to that piece.
You have like an easement or something?
So, one thing to keep in mind...
Are you finished with me? Are you finished with me? I can go sit down.
I would just like to, I would just like to add that, so all public right-of-way and access for that parcel do, are unchanged. You know, as Doug pointed out, there is, there is access to that lot. You know, the county would not be likely to be, you know, in the business of constructing a bridge to go north for a single parcel. So public right-of-way exist as is, the legalization would not change anyone's access issues, I guess, is the one thing I'd like to add.
So it wouldn't affect their operations?
It wouldn't affect access to their operations, correct. And in relation to the bridge and structure across the canal, that would, that would be, like she was saying, a Goal 5 discussion, which I'm not familiar with that process. But as far as the public rights-of-way are concerned, there wouldn't be an issue there.
However, if you start voiding, vacating roads and doing those kind of things, then I think it affects sometimes easements, or, I'm not an attorney, but I believe that needs to be looked into a little more thoroughly.
Why don't we...
So that we're not, it doesn't negate our right, because, you know, that's a big deal.
Yeah, we need to continue this discussion so we can get some more information.
And we'll come back better prepared.
And we will too, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, so.
We're still in hearing.
Yeah.
Rescue us.
Yeah, we'll get out of hearing mode now, come back to...
Did you want to take, in case someone else...
Oh, is there any other discussion while we're still in hearing mode? Bob, you look like you're chomping at the bit.
I'll wait till you continue the continued hearing and do some more research.
Okay, that's fair.
March 3rd, I think.
March 3rd?
March 3rd, none of us will be here.
Or 4th.
Fourth, we won't be here.
Okay, so it must be the 11th.
11th, yeah, March 11th.
Chair, I move that we continue the hearing till March 11th?
We're still in hearing.
Oh, I thought you were taking us out.
Sir, I will not be available March 11th.
Will there be somebody that can...
No, we'll all be out of the country by that point.
We could move it later than that.
Yeah, we can move it later.
It would be the 18th would be the next week.
About work, March 18th?
We will be back to the country.
When are we leaving? I'll go with you.
But we're trying to start some retirements.
So the next board meeting would be April 1st?
It will be March 3rd.
April. None of us will be, so.
What date?
Yeah.
April 1st.
April 1st?
April 1st.
Well, April 1st, work?
I'd love to attend April 1st.
Okay, let's put it on April 1st. Matt, you got that one?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for your input. So we'll come out of public hearing, we'll go back into regular meeting mood.
I should move that we table this matter until April 1st.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
After you did introductions and recognitions, the mayor of Weston joined us.
I noticed that. I saw him hiding back there.
Well, welcome. We appreciate you being here, Mr. Thule.
And he's a good actor.
Clark Road Vacation, is that you again?
Yes.
Look at that.
So, on January 1 of 2020, we received a petition from Jack and Christina Preston to vacate Clark Road, County Road 634. This portion of road is located around 4.3 miles west of the Alpine Outpost at Tollgate. It's a 60-foot right-of-way. It's located south of Weston Elgin Highway 204, and extends westerly to the east line of the Lincoln Mountain Highlands subdivision. It's about 950 feet in length. The road itself originates from a portion of Old Road 389, established 1892. The total road was about eight and a half miles in length and makes up portions of what is now Basket Mountain, Gentry, and McDougal Camp Road, among others. The portion of Road 389 lying immediately west of this proposed vacation was itself vacated in 1977. The land was then developed into a subdivision, Lincoln Mountain Highlands, and very little of this old road exists east of this proposed vacation. If vacated, ownership would revert back to abiding owners, according to law. Currently, the road is used by local property owners and has the appearance of a private driveway. It is not a regularly maintained county road, nor would it likely ever become one. If you scroll down just a hair, there's a map that shows, unfortunately, this is one of the best maps I could find that shows the road's location. Just a little visual there. So as I said, Clark Road's not a regularly maintained county road, nor is it likely to ever be used as one. It does have a poor alignment, creating an inadequate intersecting angle with Highway 204. Should that ever be something that was considered to be improved, that would be a major issue with safety in mind. And it does dead-end on the west to the east line of the developed subdivision. So there, on the west side of the road, where she's got her arrow, that portion of the road from there west was vacated in 1977 to accommodate that subdivision that went in. So it is very much a dead-end road. The road provides no access benefits to adjoining owners that doesn't already exist through Highway 204, Highland Drive, or McDougal Camp Road. Overall, it's a recommendation of the Public Works Department that the road be vacated as requested in the petition.
Okay, I'm sitting here looking at it right now on my map. So we need to go into hearing mode again, right? Okay, so let's suspend our regular meeting, go back into hearing mode for this road vacation. Is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of this? Come on up. Come up to the microphone and give us your name and address and...
My name is Jack Preston. I'm from Walla Walla, Washington, 934 Mountain Park Drive. We own the property, probably 90, 95% of the property that this road goes through, and the rest of the road has been vacated years ago. I don't know why this end wasn't vacated at the time. It would provide us an opportunity to have better security on our property. We have our fence here, our gate, and you go right up the road, a short way to 204, and you can run into our property. And it goes nowhere except up to the next property line, which has already been vacated. As I say, it would give us better security, we could, it would give us, make our property a little better, let's put it that way.
Looks like it was almost an aftermath to the highway, didn't it?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a short, not a shortcut even.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of this? How about anybody opposed? Okay, nobody opposed? So we can come out of hearing mode and go back into a regular session again?
Mr. Chair, move we adopt Order B, Order RD 2020-05?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming today. Number three, Architectural Services Contract.
Captain Hearn.
Captain Thornher, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office. Last week, a selection committee met with Scott Rogers of the Wenahaw Group, went over the architects that had expressed an interest in the jail remodel project, and for all intents and purposes, the architects are exactly the same. They have the same kind of experience and have done these type of projects before. The only difference that we could really see in the two groups, the, both had been asked to come to the jail and kind of look it over, give us some ideas. DLR group was no-call, no-show. Lombard group came out, gave us several ideas, kind of mashed them together and sent them back to them. They came up with some really good plans, and that's why the committee is recommending that we go with Lombard Conrad Architects.
And you said this was the committee that had built the facility in the first place, originally?
The architect.
The architect.
The architect, yeah.
So they are familiar, but, but they did come to see what you specifically had in mind?
Yes, they did.
The, the committee was unanimous in this, and, and I think what Captain Hearn's pointing out is, is significant, because, and as this project was initially being discussed, the sheriff and his staff reached out to, to various groups to see what kind of advice they could get, what kind of input they could get, and, and this group was Johnny-on-the-spot coming to do whatever they needed in terms of advice and counsel, which is very helpful, yes.
Well, as I, as I looked it over, the question that came to my mind, and you've answered it, is why this group and not the other one? Both of them look highly professional. They're very credentialed and very prepared to do something like this. So you answered the question as to why, and I appreciate that.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Captain. Airport Otter Road Improvement Contract.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Umatilla County Public Works Director. This is a request to award the contract for Airport Otter Road. We had six interested participants yesterday that gave us all some really good prices. It appears that Taponi Inc. was the low bidder at, on Schedule A at $819,625. And so it's our recommendation that the board accept the, accept and potentially award the contract to Taponi Inc. for that amount on Airport Road.
When would they get started on this project?
The, the current schedule is, let's see, this is February. I believe the construction would, would begin by the, at least by the end of March. I don't have, I didn't bring that schedule with me, but, have you got that handy, Doug? But the completion of the project is scheduled for June.
Well in time for the fair.
Mr. Chair, move approval of giving the contract to Taponi Inc., the amount of stated on their, on their bid.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Do you need any further action to direct that, that we follow up on the visits and the agreements that were made with the property owners?
Now that I know the schedule, I will give them a deadline to get something back.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
They have been, they have been set out.
Yes, yes, it's some time ago.
Did you say, no, we didn't need a motion?
No, I, that's what I was planning to do anyway.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that.
I can send you that, I think I've got that scheduled.
Okay, okay.
So the Development Code Amendment.
Got one hearing after another.
So is this another public hearing?
Sometimes you're just lucky.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, County Planning Director. I'm here today with a recommendation to amend our county development code to provide relief to property owners who have a dwelling that's been destroyed either by natural hazards or, or fire. This, this change would simplify the replacement dwelling process for dwellings in our resources, resource zones, so our EFU and grazing farm zones in the county. As a result of some of the flooding we've had, we expect that we will receive some requests for, to permit a replacement dwelling that's been destroyed. And so what this would do is provide relief to those landowners, help expedite the process and, of processing these. So it would result in if someone had a dwelling that was destroyed by a natural hazard or fire, they would come to us to get a permit, and we would simply issue a zoning permit over the counter rather than going through the six-to-eight week process of a land use decision. All of the requirements found in statute would still apply, because it is a state legislated zone. We have to still follow what's in statute for replacement dwellings. But this would provide some additional relief to those flood victims that we're expecting will get permit. Also supports your efforts last week to waive the permit fees for a period of one year for those flood victims.
So that emergency action had no impact on this particular portion of the code?
That's correct. We had to do those separate. One was strictly just related to fees, and because this is an amendment to the Development Code, it had to go to hearing.
Further facilitates a replacement of homes, repair of them.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and go into hearing mode. Is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of this proposed action? Okay, anybody want to speak against this action? Okay. And we can come out of hearing mode and entertain a motion on that.
Chair, move we adopt Ordinance 2020-01?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 Motion carries. Creation of Position of Health and Human Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amy Ashton-Williams, Director of Umatilla County Human Services. So before you is a plan to create a limited-duration position in the Milton-Freewater office, in particular to serve the monolingual population. What we're finding in Milton-Freewater is that our caseload there, who's currently being covered by one clinician, equals that of the caseloads carried in Pendleton and in Hermiston that has two clinicians there. So dollars, I wrote for dollars through GOBE that would allow us to have a limited-duration mental health associate for one year. What our plans are, are to track the billing to see if that position could continue to sustain after the one year.
Had no impact of the general fund?
No impact on general fund.
Can I move?
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Bridge Repair Contract.
Is that the one I signed on Friday?
Good morning. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director, again. During the recent flooding, we had severe damage to one of our bridges on the Walla Walla River system. This particular bridge is referred to as the Dorothy Bridge. We had an opportunity to get Don Jackson in and do complete repairs to that bridge on, on very short notice. In fact, if he stays on schedule by the end of next week, the bridge should be operational again, which would be huge. And so we're requesting the, that Don Jackson be formally awarded this contract for $91,000. Nine, $91,966. Didn't put my glasses on.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Go vote, get it stayed.
Motion carries.
I was just anxious to get it happening.
Yeah. Gravel Pit Drilling and Blasting.
This is also associated with the recent flooding. We went through the process with ODOT and got approval to use one of their quarry sites for riprap for the Umatilla River system. Rhino Works has drilled and blasted our, our last two quarries that we've had done. They do a superb job, and he pull, actually was able to pull off from one of his other projects and come do ours on, on very short notice. Matter of fact, he moved in and started drilling within 24 hours of when I called him. So, we're requesting to give Rhino Works a contract for $3.15 per yard, solid yard shot, and that's, comes to $47,000, what is that, $250? And the, just on a side note, it is scheduled to be, the holes are scheduled to be loaded tomorrow, so. We'll be hauling riprap out of there by Monday.
Mr. Chair, move approval. Hold on here, excuse me.
Go or not?
We've had too many of those hearings.
Yeah.
I move approval.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
How was that?
You're on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Letter in opposition is Senate Bill 1530, also known as House Bill 2020, cap and trade, in case anybody was wondering.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, you go ahead and speak to that.
Okay, can I have a? The Eastern Oregon Counties Association is, has asked that counties take action with respect to Senate Bill 1530. In reviewing the multitude of materials that they've sent out, I personally got a bit uncomfortable with the breadth of what they're proposing we oppose with respect to 1530. I, I think we need to focus on a specific Senate bill and the actions surrounding that Senate bill and not oppose anything that might ever happen in the future regarding the environment. So, I have, I took liberty of rewriting that and indicating that, that we are opposed to the passage of Senate Bill 1530. We're concerned about the impact, the economic impact study that has not been conducted with respect to 1530. It's, it's a premature legislative action. We think it has a negative impact on Eastern Oregon. We're concerned about the fact that landmark legislation of this type was never intended to be passed in the short session, and further that the inclusion of an emergency clause basically precludes future input from the citizens of Oregon. So, based on all of those concerns, I move that we authorize the chair to sign the letter opposing 1530 based on those concerns.
Commissioner Murdock, would those comments also apply to House Bill 2020, which Speaker Kotek has put up? It's, it's a mirror bill, I believe.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, but I, I think as, as Commissioners, it would be prudent for us to, to speak to specific reasons, the specific reasons I've outlined.
Agree, I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 Motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Reports. Mr. Alfring.
Well, I have nothing further to report than what's been going on and the appreciation that I have for all the, all the people who stepped up to assist the victims of the flooding and all the work that our county employees have put in toward that, hours and hours. And also particularly thankful for the time that was given to us by other counties and other agencies within the state who worked, labored long, long hours at our emergency center and put in a tremendous amount of work to get us started along the road to recovery. And I say started, because it's going to be a long road before it's, it's all complete. But having that expertise in the room helped a lot and sped us up in that direction. They, it was stated that we had a full third of all the emergency personnel in the state of Oregon were here in Pendleton to assist us, and for that, we'll always be grateful, grateful.
I don't know if Commissioner Schaefer's going to speak to the, the full extent of damages or the status of, of a federal declaration, but I did have an opportunity Sunday to drive up to the Bar M. It is passable, it is by no means repaired, but it's passable. And, and our county crews were, were at work, it was Sunday, and I think they were at work Monday, trying to open that up to the residents. I understand from Mr. Fellows that, that the Walla Walla River Road is open to the extent it can, though Harris Park is not accessible on that road because of the missing bridge, is that correct? It suffered severe damage. It was interesting, I have gotten calls from groups that, and, and some of them in Walla Walla that utilize Harris Park, love Harris Park, and it's like they've lost an old friend and are anxious to get up there and volunteer and help. And, and I think at some point soon, we'll get up Mill Creek as well, where I understand it, have you been up there, Commissioner Schaefer?
I flew over it in a helicopter and that was, that was it.
Told us pretty well devastated.
The devastation is staggering up there, yeah.
What's your current estimate on damage?
On damage for?
County, we, you know, we.
County roads, I don't want to speak for any of the cities, but for Umatilla County roads, we're at $25 million in damage to roads and bridges. So, obviously, at our Public Works crew, they've been working non-stop. I don't think they've had a day off since then, so, very, very proud of the work that our Public Works are doing as well as throughout the county. I mean, it's not just us, and not only is it our Public Works, but we also have Columbia County. They brought in a crew of four personnel and equipment to help us out with, with our floods. So, and, and not just Columbia County, we had offers throughout the state, hey, come and, come and help us. You know, or let us come help you, is what they're getting. And like Commissioner Alfring said, we had one-third of the counties, or the state's emergency managers rolled through our center at one time or another. So, and the help that they provided was invaluable, the Oregon State Fire Marshals were there. We had probably, on any given day during the peak of this, we had about 60 people in the emergency operations center out at the sheriff's office. And we could not have done this without their help. Obviously, we couldn't do this without the help of the volunteers here, the local volunteers from our county, the citizens, the business owners, it's just, it's incredible. When, when you hear the stories that have come out of this, you know, like, a friend of mine owns the auto clinic on Northeast Riverside, and they started a GoFundMe, somebody started a GoFundMe page for him, and the losses that they were hit with, and he said, you know, take every dime of that and give it to the folks from Northeast Riverside Trailer Court. They need it way more than I do. And that blew me away when I heard him say that. So it just, stories like that are just, you know, coming and coming and coming, and it's just, it's amazing. And I couldn't be more proud to live here, so. it's just, it's amazing, and I couldn't be more proud to live here, so.
Yeah, those, the six, actually, six guys from Columbia County.
Those are six? Okay, I thought it was four.
I guess they're going to go home for the weekend, because they're going to let them go home for the weekend, but they're coming back for another week.
Wow.
So, pretty amazing.
That is amazing, so. All right, well, with that, we were adjourned.